This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council. It is currently 7:00 PM and we are calling the special town council meeting to order. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance. We, I know we did have some comments submitted by email. At this time, we'll open up for any comments from the public. Step up to the podium and state your name and address, please. Last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment at this time, we'll move on in the agenda.
The Chair wouldn't like me to just acknowledge that we did receive the public comment from Mr. Michael Huco, 20 John Street in Killenly. He outlined a number of questions with regards to his review of the budget. You have received and all have received a copy of that and I have submitted it to the Secretary. It's also posted on the town's website if anybody wishes to review in detail. And I will be responding to Mr. Huco and some of his questions directly tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm not sure it's the right time. Jason, I did receive that, a question about, did you see that question about, the guy wanted the whole list of properties and which ones were exempt?
I did see a correspondence between Kathy and I think the gentleman about the grand list. I didn't get a chance to really dive into that. I got, I started seeing that about 5:00, 5:30 this afternoon. So, I was gonna start looking at that tomorrow morning. I think it's just...
Okay, so she's on it.
Yeah, she was working on it and had replied to him, so I just haven't dug through the list of emails on that.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you. Alright, so at this time, I do not have my agenda with me. Next item up is the budget deliberations. Let me steal that for a second. Consideration and action on a resolution setting the town of Killenly operating budget for fiscal year '24 to '25. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Now, we will open up for discussion.
I just would like to note that the resolution item before you has blanks where the dollar values would be for the general government budget, the Board of Education budget, and the total number. As you will be deliberating that, that is not included in your, in the resolution. We typically leave that blank. So, you will need to amend your motion at some point to incorporate those numbers into that resolution. Just wanted to point that out. It was on, it was attached, should've been attached to your agenda. If anybody needs an extra copy, let me know.
Ms. Clorio, if I could have a copy, there wasn't an agenda in my mail-ons.
Okay, sure. For everyone around the table, I just want to point out that I did, Chairman Anderson did reach out to me and indicated that they, everyone wanted a copy of the reserve balances. Some of them were found in the F-pages, others were not. I apologize for that. So, I have detailed, Jen provided that, detailed all of the reserve balances and where they stand with the, with the current year. So, these are those individual reserves that have been funded over time. The winter maintenance is the one that we are looking at changing to storm maintenance. And again, we've had that, I indicated that in my budget presentation. So, you can see where the balances are for each of those. And then, at your tables is also a potential scenario. So, this again is based on a conversation that I had with the Chairman around just, and I appreciate some of that feedback early on, so that way I can prepare this in advance for all of you guys for consideration. These potential cuts would reduce the overtime in highway maintenance as we discussed during that budgetary process of $9,000. But also, there was potentially some additional savings with the storm maintenance, reducing that overtime to 40,000, by 40,000 to 75,000 in total for overtime. Again, that winter reserve balance or storm maintenance balance, reserve fund, does have a healthy balance. So, if we did have a higher year or a, you know, a more active year for storms, we have some of, some of that room in that reserve to be able to manage that. We did appropriately reduce the employer taxes, so that's the FICA tax that's associated with those wage payments. That would be reduced out as well with that reduction. And then, just some feedback with regards to some of the human services subsidy. This proposal reduces the Killenly Business Association by 2,000, back down to $3,000 subsidy, eliminates the request from UCFS, and a reduction to KB ambulance of 5,000. Largely, my understanding was around fuel. I did have a conversation with Steve Varga with regards to the fuel. We did do an analysis to determine how much fuel consumption was happening. So, their gas consumption has actually increased over the last three years, but largely, that's because they've been transitioning vehicles from diesel to gasoline, so their diesel consumption has been decreasing. But when I spoke to Steve with regards to the bud, his budget, he was, when they built the budget, they assumed an increase in the per gallon cost of both diesel and gasoline. He was unaware that we had locked in at a lower rate, so I reviewed with him potentially reducing that by $5,000, which he felt was, was acceptable and would be fine. He felt that based on what they had budgeted and what we had calculated, that was a very fair assumption. And so, he just wasn't aware that we had had that reduction. So, and he did say that, you know, we talked through the increase in the, you know, the diesel has not decreased at the same rate as the gasoline has increased. So, we talked through why is the, why is the gallons, you know, why are they using so much more gasoline? And one of the things that they had, that he indicated was that, over the last year and a half, they have been diverted from De Kimball Hospital more and more frequently. De Kimball is no longer our trauma hospital. So, when they have a trauma, they're being diverted to UMass or to Providence, as opposed to being able to just go to De Kimball, which is what they typically had done in the past, was just go to De Kimball. So, their rides are a lot longer and they're seeing more people in the Killenly area that is opting to go to Bacchus, as opposed to going to De Kimball. And many times, they're being diverted from the Plainfield Bacchus location all the way down to Norwich. So, that does increase the gallons used. They're not necessarily fueling at alternative locations unless there's a significant need, but they typically have the ability, but they do use more gas because they are diverting to farther locations than what they had historically been doing, which that does make sense given the trend of what their usage is. So, we kinda walked through all of those numbers, walked through what their potential exposure was. I did, based on the gallons used in our system, to what they have budgeted in the Killenly budget, it's very clear that they're only incorporating a portion of their fuel into the Killenly budget. So, they are accounting for that fuel that would be within the paramedic intercept program or something else. So, it's clear that they are not charging all of that fuel consumption to just the Killenly program. They are allocating across their, their programs. So, this budget also assumes a reduction, so that brings a cut on the general government side of about a hundred and two, a little over 102,000. And for capital projects, the pavement management proposal that I had put into this budget at 3.2 million, that was really surrounded around that conversation that we had had about kinda front-loading that $10 million into the, you know, starting it a bit earlier in the, in the next fiscal year and then tapering down more quickly over the subsequent years. I understand that there's some desire to pull that back, so I reduced that back down to current year levels of $2,250,000. And I matched that same level of fund balance contribution. So, the, the expenditure was 3.2 million. The fund balance contribution in the original proposed budget was $2 million. I've increased that to $2,250,000. So, now the capital is fully offset by fund balance contribution. And then, I just, I plugged in the number that, I plugged in the, a 50% cut on the education, just as that feedback that was given to me. Again, these are all conceptual for your deliberation, but this does bring the results of the mill rate down to 21.24 mils. So, as I had indicated in the budget previously, what, we consider the equalized mill rate, so in other words, if I were to take the current year's budget and I would put in the new grand list, what would that mill rate calculation come to? And it would come to 21.20. So, this scenario that you have before you is a .04 mill rate increase from that equalized mill rate. Again, that equalized mill rate doesn't mean that everybody has the same taxes as what they have in the current year, because everybody's values have changed differently through, across the town. But, that's just to give you that, you know, that equalization of, without the mill rate, without the revaluation, what is that mill rate there? So, so that's a decrease of 5.64 mils from the current mill rate.
Thank you for that. Mr. Grandelsky?
Could you give us the value of a mil?
Yes, the value of the mil is $1,814,289.
Thank you. Ms. Clorio, I have one question. On the winter maintenance reserve, what are those funds expendable on? What can we expend those funds on? What are they typically expended on?
Yeah, so historically, it's been considered winter maintenance, so that has been available for any winter storm events. So, if we needed to buy additional sanding, salt materials, plow blades, overtime, if we ran out of overtime in the operating budget, overtime would be expended. As the count, in our previous conversation, we were gonna change this to storm maintenance, which means then any weather-related response event, so wind events, hurricane events, tornado events, we've had those. All of that would now, any supplies needed for those events would first come out of the operating budget, and if that becomes exhausted, it would then come out of this reserve fund.
Thank you. Just one question. How full is our salt shed right now?
We will be full at the end of the year. We will receive enough salt to refill. We haven't had a heavy year for product.
Other question I had, the third mechanics position at the town garage, what was the value of that position, seeing how it hasn't been filled in over a year?
Sure. Yep, so I do have a second scenario, that if you'd like me to hand out, I can, that does incorporate that. I didn't initially hand that out, because I wasn't, we hadn't talked about that previously. We didn't talk about that today.
No, I thought I said it this morning.
So, I wasn't, so I wasn't sure, but I did prepare it just in case, so let me pull that out and hand it out. So, the, the one that's coming around is exactly the same of everything that I just relayed to you. The only difference is, it's removing that third mechanic position in the central garage at $54,000, reducing health insurance at $12,000, and it reduces an additional 4,100 of employer tax.
Thank you. Other question I had, as far as United Services, I know the youth services is mandated. The rest of their request, how much, if any, of that is mandated services that we?
Sure. So, I will say that I did her, the director, Diane Manning, and I did play a bit of telephone tag today. I called her, she called me, we kept missing each other. So, I did not get an opportunity to directly speak with her. So, it doesn't, based on the letter that was submitted, it doesn't appear that there is statutory requirements around it. However, it is based on a per capita. So, I don't, I don't wanna lead you down a road of, there's not an obligation on the town side to pay for that. I don't know if there's certain requirements like there are with NDDH, right, that builds a per capita. I don't, so I'm not 100% positive, I didn't, wasn't unable to get that answer for you for tonight, simply because we were unable to make that connection. So, in her, in the Youth Services Bureau request, it specifically stated, she did not state that in the secondary request, so I don't think that there, that it is statutory. But again, without being able to make that direct connection with her, you know, today, I don't wanna just make the assumption that there is no, you know, no continuing obligation on the town's side, given that it's based on a per capita formula. My experience with per capita formulas is that there is a historical obligation. And I, and I'm just not clear as to whether or not there really is a historical obligation.
Thank you. One other question, I know we had talked about the ECCD request.
Yes. Yep, so EC, that's the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. They have assisted the town several times over the past few years. They have, they have designed and installed two rain gardens within the town, and they also contributed rain barrels. We have one at the library that we utilize for wat, they utilize for watering one of the, one of the areas over there. So, we have utilized their services in creating some of that conservation land. We actually, the two rain gardens, one is on Main Street near the railroad crossing and the other one is Water Street. We did have some volunteers that were doing some ongoing maintenance of those, and those volunteers have kind of petered off. So, we're trying to reinvigorate a new group to retake over the ongoing maintenance of those. But, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District did, you know, work with the town in getting the funding for those and really designing them for us, and they distributed the rain barrels. They, we didn't have to pay for those.
Thank you.
Did they work with our conservation?
They have, yeah. Jean has been very active with our conservation commission.
I will open up to other council members for comments.
I have a comment on the KB ambulance. I asked for clarification of all their non-salaried bills because they all seem overinflated and I, we didn't get that information.
One question I did have, Ms. Clorio, is next year, when we get the, can anyone who's submitting for a subsidy as far as the human services subsidies? I did hear, I did get a lot of feedback where we would like to see, basically, in a sense of budget, their entire budget, how much of their budget is expended towards Killenly.
Sure.
That way, when we're deliberating on things like this, we have a clearer picture as to exactly what their impact is to Killenly since the taxpayers are supporting them.
Sure, I can definitely incorporate that into our ask and make sure that, you know, we communicate that to them.
Any other questions, comments? Any other changes anyone would like to see? Mr. Grandelsky?
Our, our fund balance, so we have a good fund balance.
Correct.
So, if we increase usage of fund balance to get the mill rate, we're not gonna get hammered by the, where, is there a?
Yeah, so, we, we just had our credit rating call and we just actually received our credit rating. We are, we've maintained a AA+ stable, which is, they even acknowledge in that report that that is unusual for a community of our economic base, just because we are a small community and we have some instability in that. In our conversations with the credit rating call, with the credit rating agency, they, they were concerned about the town looking to utilize fund balance for operational costs. When we explained that we were looking to leverage it for capital investment, they were very pleased with that. So, in every experience that I've had with the credit rating agencies, when we start talking about utilizing it for operational expenditures, they become very concerned. It's just like if you were to go to your mortgage company and say, "Yeah, mortgage, I'm gonna pay you, but I'm gonna pay you only out of my savings account," with no plan around, you know, how do you replenish your savings account? So, that's what their concern is, is that we fall off a cliff by utilizing fund balance to offset operational costs. So, given that we are, while we are AA+ rated, there is a higher level of potential downward pressure that would move us, that would move down our credit rating, from a AA+ to a AA or a AA-. And that all, why is that important? That impacts how much we end up paying in interest when we go out to borrow, right? So, right now, we're in an active borrowing pattern because we're doing active capital projects that were approved by the town. So, we are gonna be, we're issuing debt right now. We're gonna get ready to issue debt again next year because we have, we'll have hopefully the rest of KMS and we will have the good, the large, a large, the remaining largest portion of Westfield Avenue renovation going on. So, you still have another, two cycles of debt issuances that your credit rating agencies are really gonna be scrutinizing. Number one, you're bringing on a lot more debt and the high school debt, while it's coming off, I mean, our high school debt comes off in 2030, but there's a couple of years that we're balancing all of this at the same time. They wanna know that we can manage our operational components without just relying on fund balance. So, they were very, very pleased to hear that we were looking at utilization for capital projects, because they recognize on, when you're investing in a capital project, you have the ability, year over year, to easily pull back on that, and it doesn't create that fiscal cliff that using it for operational purposes does.
So, do you have any fund balance in the current budget?
It's only for capital.
Only capital.
So, $2,250,000 is in the proposed, assuming you would take one of the scenario for cuts before you, that would leave a fund balance utilization of $2,250,000, and that is entirely for pavement management plan.
That's what we're using, a general fund for capital projects, that's what you're saying?
Yes, out of the fund balance.
Out of the fund balance.
Yep, so it's not impacting mill rate.
I do have one question. If we're going out to bond for the projects we have going on now, could we use some of the fund balance to reduce the amount we're going out to bond?
So, yeah, you can, and the town council had communicated that in looking to potentially, and we've layered that into our fund balance analysis, of using 2.5 million of fund balance to appropriate that to the Westfield Avenue project, to reduce the amount of debt service. So, yes, you can absolutely do that and reduce your debt service. What, how much we have to eventually go out and borrow, you just self-fund it internally as opposed to going out to borrow it. Once that trigger is pulled, once the town truly appropriates that, which I believe would have to go through special town meeting for that fund balance appropriation, then from a bonding perspective, from a borrowing perspective, we have to expend that first before we can go out for bonding. But, 2.5 million, we'll expend that this summer.
So, question I have, if we were going to allocate more fund balance towards the Westfield project, in the amount that we're gonna go out to bond, would that have an impact on the debt service payments in the '24, '25 fiscal year budget?
No, it would not.
Or would that be '25, '26?
It would be the following year, because we're already cycled in at this point in time for that $10 million bond issuance. So, we're gonna be issuing that in a couple of weeks.
Pricing is next week.
Yeah, our pricing on that is next week, so it wouldn't impact, there's not enough time for you to do that. It would impact for the subsequent time, though.
Okay.
As to how much we're actually gonna be needing to borrow for a subsequent year.
Oh, I'm giving up my stipend. That's $1,500.
Yeah, I can take mine off.
Yes, yes, now you're talking, Betty.
One other thing I want, I just wanna bring up, because this did come up, and I had this conversation with Ms. Clorio this morning. In 2018, 2019, there was a $630,000 use of funds from a tax stabilization fund to offset mill rate. That was one thing I had asked, because it'd come up. Can we put money into a fund like that to where we could use it next year to offset mill rate and it wouldn't affect our bond rating? But, that was a special circumstance and I will let Ms. Clorio explain that situation.
Yeah, so that was, that was compliments of our governor at that year. So, that year, the governor had proposed, in the governor's budget, a substantial change in how they were funding special education costs. So, what they decided to do was, the proposal at the time was to significantly reduce our ECS payment and make that special education portion payment directly to the Board of Education. And the Boards of Education were supposed to net that number out. All things shook out in the end, after everybody passed their budgets, and we ended up back in the exact same process that we have right now, where ECS got funded at the normal levels, Boards of Education weren't getting that special education payment directly, and so our mill rates were set at a much higher number, right? So, what they did was, they took that added revenue from the mill rate and they put it into a special, into a tax stabilization fund to use to reduce the mill rate next year. So, that was all because of the state's proposal around funding of special education and the reduction in ECS for that year. It screwed up everybody's budgets. Like, everybody that didn't have delayed budget processes got screwed up by that, because we budget, Killenly has historically, many towns, we budget based on the governor's budget, because our legislators typically don't complete the budgetary process until after we have completed our budgets. So, you can't layer in legislative proposals because you really have no idea whether or not they're gonna stick her. So, you, we have always done it off of the governor's budget. That year, the governor's budget was, it was one of the crazier years for the governor's budget, crazier years. So, that got expended, that got used to offset the mill rate in the, actually, the next two subsequent years, because we didn't end it up, the town ended up not having to actually utilize that in the first time around because we had so much surplus. So, that ended up being able to remain in the fund, and so they were, they had, they used it in subsequent year, and that's why you saw that.
Thank you for that explanation.
I got a question.
Mr. Wayhead?
So, you wanna, we wanted to add a half person over at the Parks and Rec. What was that for, again?
So, the, that's the Parks, in the Parks Department, that was changing some, moving seasonal position to a full-time, year-round position. So, right now, we have two full-time, year-round positions and we have two seasonal positions. The seasonal positions work 40 hours a week essentially for the summer months. They, one starts in April, one starts in July, they pretty much end up, end between September and the beginning of November. However, with the, you know, we're getting ready to, this year, we're doing the construction on the expansion of the River Trail, and we have a lot more utilization of our parks over the winter time. It's, we don't have enough staff, we're just two, to plow, maintain, take care of all of that space throughout the entire winter months as well. So, the proposal was to move a seasonal person to a full, to a third full-time position.
So, you're gonna eliminate the two seasonal?
Eliminate one seasonal, so we would still have one seasonal. You can't do all of this mowing with only three people. You still need four people for all the mowing, that's the heaviest lift at the time, but having three people that are year-round to cover, for, you know, maintaining all of the open spaces that we have.
So, the only reason for the add, the half person, would be for the plowing for the River Trail?
Well, not just the River Trail, we have a lot of our-
I just wonder what the extra load is for them?
Yeah, so we have a lot of, our utilization of the parks during the winter has continually increased. So, there's a lot more trash, there's a lot more ongoing maintenance that needs to take place throughout the winter months, especially as we have these not-so-cold winters and they're, you know, nice winters, you get, you get really high utilization. So, and we have, our staff is out there all seven days, you know, taking out the trash, checking to see if there's damage on any of our equipment, making sure there's not limbs that are blocking things whenever we have storm or events like that. And then, when we do have- And then when we do have snow or ice or freezing weather, they have to go out and either plow or, or manage that condition because we have a lot of people that walk either the River Trail, Cat Hollow, Owen Bell, um, you know, Davis Park. Um, and they also manage, uh, they also assist in managing, uh, those parking lots as well for those spaces. So it, it's a lot of, it's a lot of ground to cover.
But we've done that continuously.
Um-
So far.
I would say, but yes, they've covered similar spaces. Um, River Trail has expanded over the years. Um, the uptick usage though, it drives, there's more trash, there's, there's just general more wear and tear. And you have more maintenance that you have to do.
See, I thought, I thought the reason that we're adding that full-time, not adding the full-time, making it full, part-time to full-time was because of the mowing over at, uh-
Westfield. So that will assist us when we get to Westfield Avenue. Um, we won't be looking at adding another full-time position. At that time, we, you know, we may have to look at whether or not it makes sense for adding another seasonal position if they cannot incorporate all of that mowing into there. But, um, we're also adding in that extension on that River Trail as well. So try to balance it all out.
Who mows, who mows that now?
The Board of Education, it's their facility.
So we'll be able to deduct that out of their budget because they're not gonna, they're not gonna have that load of work?
They would, they would have managed that on their side of the fence. On the town side, it's only a final number at the bottom line.
Uh, do we make motions now to have discussions, Jason, or no?
Oh, we're, we're, this is, this is open discussion.
Well, say we wanted to vote on that, that, you know, like, say we made a mo, do, do we do that now or no?
You, you can.
I would, so, because I'd like to continue that discussion and just see where we lay because if there's interest or there's not interest, we don't have to go on and on with some of these things, right? If, if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, since, since this is the topic right now.
I'd like to make a motion on, on, uh, dropping that full-time position change from the budget.
To bring it back to a seasonal position? Okay.
Um, so we have a motion, is there a second? All right, um, I will open for discussion. Um, and while we're discussing, Ms. Clorio can look at what the numbers would be.
Yep.
Um, impact on the budget. Uh, my question being, when do we anticipate opening the extension of the River Trail? And when do we anticipate the town taking over maintenance on Westfield Avenue Fields?
So, uh, the River Trail will be under construction starting in May. Um, we expect to have that completed probably by the beginning to the middle of August. So that'll be opening up, um, in August. Um, and then as far as Westfield Avenue, we're looking for that to come onboard. Um, likely taking over the maintenance of that in, uh, the summer, summer to early fall of 2025. Sorry, I had to stop and think of my years. Cross too many years sometimes, so. It, we, I, we'll go really fast. So not in this upcoming fiscal year, but the very beginning of the subsequent fiscal year. And that'll be the whole facility and the maintenance of the grounds. We did also take, but we also did take on the maintenance of the, um, tennis courts. That got transferred to us last year. Yep, that got transferred to us last year. And we do have a lot of utilization on, of that even over the winter.
Did Jason say you, um, you're gonna, you're gonna give us the number of the difference?
Yep, that's what I'm looking up right now because I have it in my thing.
Of seasonal to full-time?
Yep.
Um, and just for clarification, the River Trail, when you said started construction in May, um, finished construction in August, that is, uh, 2024?
Correct, correct. The current, current year, it's not gonna take that long.
Okay, I wasn't sure if when you said May, in the May of 25.
In a couple of weeks, it'll start and they, they're expecting a couple of months for full. So the-
Thank you.
Let me just make sure I have it. Where do you go?
Right here.
It's 29?
Right. I'd have to figure out the breakdown, breakdown of the French.
The increases. 20, I know what the incre, I know what that is. 12,000 for that. And then what's this? Nope. Uh, nope. Five times, there's five plus. This is what I got.
Yep.
Is that right? That's what, I know that's health insurance.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I can give you the individual line items that you would actually make the changes to, but in totality, it's $43,127. That includes, um, employer taxes, health insurance, and then that shift, that additional salary.
Uh, thank you, I, I do have one other question. Considering we took over maintenance on the tennis courts, um, last year, um, and you're talking about increased utilization of the fields, um, this past winter, have we expended any overtime for, um, the maintenance of those? Also, you had also mentioned, um, that we were out there seven days a week.
Yep.
Is that the sixth and seventh day a week, is that overtime for the staff?
It is overtime and double time on Sunday.
Um, is there a way, um, if we're bringing on, if we were to bring on new staff, is there a way we could stagger their shifts?
Not by union contract.
Okay.
So the, uh, but you would then have the burnout that you have with staff. Because right now, you're, you have two guys that are constantly doing, you know, long shifts. But, uh, overtime, we spend a little over, um, you know, $15,000 almost annually on overtime in the Parks Department, um, in order to be able to service.
So with that contract, is it impossible to sub anything out?
Um, not impossible, but you would have, uh, I, there, there are some constraints there.
You know, just the things that people couldn't handle.
Correct.
Yeah.
Understood.
Uh, so I'm a, um, I'm a rec education person. So that's, uh, that, that's 1/42 of a mil that we're saving by not doing that. That's the number that I look at. Um, I don't see any, um, it's not something I would agree with, but, um, I, not for 1/42 of a mil for me, but, just thinking.
Thank you.
I have, being the liaison to the rec commission and Tony, I know is now an alternate, I, I know there, there's been a real push trying to get, um, pickleball up and running over by what, the courts on West, Westfield and they just haven't. I mean, if, any way that we could help them be able to get to that point, that would be-
That's in our capital improvement plan for funding for those up-
I know it is, but-
Because it ended up coming in substantially higher in cost when we went out to bid for that. So this budget year, if everything is approved, we would, we'd be approving the additional low-set money in order to be able to actually fund the renovation of that and get those front courts turned into pickleball courts. That's the goal.
My, my other thing too though is that, um, it's the high use and, I mean, they, they do a phenomenal job. Um, I, I always like to help somebody out that's doing, I mean, I spent the last two days out in the yard and that's not easy work, so. Um, and nothing worse than trying to clean up after people, so.
Um, I do have one question and this is, I guess it would be budget-related in the sense that we'd be expending funds on the pickleball court. Um, have we looked into the noise impact from pickleball courts on the surrounding neighbors? Because I've heard a lot of comments made to me about pickleball courts and how you really don't want it in a residential area.
Um, considering these are, um, you know, they were tennis courts, there was, um, they're looking at putting basketball in the back. We are cognizant that there is two residents that are fairly close to that. Um, there is vegetation in between the two, but, um, you know, we- Pickle, it was a high school, right? Like, I mean, this isn't exactly like it's a brand-new, never been installed there previously. There's football games that occur there. Um, every week, there's football practice, there's soccer, there's, you know, there's a lot of sports activity that is loud over there to begin with. I don't know that pickleball's really going to change that all that much. Um, you know, at Owen Bell, we have kind of the ongoing thing back and forth between pickleball, the basketball courts, and the, uh, skate park. You know, um, so, you know, every sport activity has its own generation of noise and, you know, there is a lot of activity over at that complex as a whole.
I mean, every source is right across the street, so you have trucks coming in and out. I mean, it's a very busy neighborhood. I grew up in that neighborhood. It was a high school, so the neighbors that live over there, I'm sure they're used to the noise. And I think pickleball is probably the least of the noise that's gonna come out of there. Seriously.
The loudspeakers from the football games that I can hear three streets over? Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I've, I've got a comment. Uh, so I just wanna say I've got a few more suggestions that, you know, might be unpopular, but I wanna speak on behalf of the taxpayer. Um, when I see these posts about people losing their business and losing their homes and, and they're not gonna be able to stay here, none of this is personal for me, uh, in terms of making a cut. All of these people are deserving, the, the school is deserving, the, the people that cut the fields are deserving. Uh, it, I just wanna tighten the belt for those people that might lose their home or lose their business. Um, but everyone on here is worthy. All of these things is, but we have a very, very good town, a very tight budget. Uh, I think everyone does a great job, so just wanted to say that.
Um, one thing I would just like to add that, just a reminder, we're not cutting a current position. This would be cutting an increase. Um, it's not like we're, we would be laying off any staff or cutting anyone's hours.
And I'd like to add it, if, if we're, if we're taking away responsibilities from the school, the town should be equally reimbursed for those, for those duties. And I think we need to tighten the belt, like Michelle said. We're spending the taxpayer's money. It may be just a few pennies or whatever you think it is, but it's, it's still, it adds up, it adds up, it adds up. There's a lot of things that could be cut in there in small amounts that equal in big amounts. If you pick on one thing, that may be a small amount, but, is what it is.
Another question, another question. Um, when, if we added that extra full-time from seasonal, I know we do a lot of our own in, in-house projects. I know, um, like the bathrooms at Owen Bell, we didn't sub that out. We did that ourselves, um, at a considerable cost savings. Um, is that something that, by adding that extra person from seasonal up to the full, would they be more ca, more available to help complete other projects? I know we were supposed to be doing an expansion or doing, changing up the splash pad and all that.
Yeah, and that's really a collaboration between the Highway Department and the Parks Department. They work together on those. Um, you know, adding another full-time person and being able to have that available, um, those available hands during the non-peak seasons because that's when they can really get these done is during the peak season of, uh, spring into summer. Um, yeah, does it help? Absolutely. Um, they, you know, have a greater capability of being able to kind of tick off some of those, uh, the larger, you know, components that, that we do in-house. Like, we just did the Joyce Ritchie Pavilion, that was all done in-house. Um, and so, you know, Parks works with Highway in order to be able to accomplish that. And yes, it does save, you know, overall, uh, significant amount of funds because we're not having to contract out and pay contract labor costs.
What is the reason they work seven days a week?
Trash has to get emptied. We have to check and make sure that the parks are still safe, that there's not broken things in it, that people haven't lit things on fire, um, that, you know, the parks are available for people and ready to accept people in. Otherwise, you end up with overflowing trash bins and damage to your parks that you, you know, don't go days before you can see that. So they have to be out there at seven days a week.
So should there be a union contract to change their hours? Because if it's a Monday through Friday and they have to work Saturday and Sunday?
That's, but that's part of union negotiations.
When, when will their next union negotiation come up?
Uh, they are due up for negotiations, um, next year.
Okay.
Now, if there were a group of volunteers who came forward and on a extremely steady basis were at the park, taking care of trash, looking at the park on weekends, is that something that would be allowable or would that be going against the union contract?
Um, I would have to check late with our labor attorney on that with regards to union. It's a union, that's a grievance waiting to happen. I mean, that's union work. Um, so I would say that that's probably a violation. Um, and I, again, we accept as much volunteer work as we possibly can. We get a lot of volunteer groups that come out and help clean up the parks at certain time of the year and help do some of those, uh, you know, pick up the trash things along that are scattered all over place, weed some of the, some of the places, you know, help plant flowers in different locations. But what we find ongoing is that everybody has great intentions. They start, they have great passion and it's fantastic to see. Everybody's life changes. And so when we don't have that ability, when we don't have those people that are, um, coming out anymore, ultimately, it turns to town staff that still has to manage it, you know? And that's where we get caught, you know, like, you know, we're dealing with, trying to find another group to pick up the rain gardens and the, you know, different flower gardens that are more, you know, finicky and stuff like that. The, that group dissipated. It's either that or we're gonna have, you know, beds of weeds. So we see that typically in a lot of, you know, groups. They're just, it's great, they have great passion and they start. Um, our, everybody's lives changes. And when it comes to volunteerism, that's the first thing that people will divert off of is volunteerism because, you know, they, they're not going to stop doing their nine to, or their jobs, whatever that might be. And, you know, they, if their kids get diverted onto something else, that's a different priority than volunteering to pick, to pick up trash or empty trash.
What is the amount of overtime that they spend during the year?
Parks is, um, right around 15,000.
Yeah, what Mary's saying about volunteers, they will be, they're actually assisting our paid staff. So if you have paid staff, they have to be there. And that's, so we need a minimum amount of work to be done, uh, you know, so oversight and whatnot. We're trying to encourage people to use our facilities. You, you talked to Donna Bromwell in Conservation and she's out there. She wants people to use all our open spaces. So it's just that, you know, it goes way beyond. We tried to, we tried looking into this at the landfill to have a reuse table. All of a sudden, you had someone, oh, they're gonna come forward, come forward. Never, ever showed. So it was, and what do you do if you have excess and it builds up? That's, that's a wish. So yeah, we have to have our, you know, paid people there. If we can get volunteers at the same time, that may reduce. But again, when, when you're paid, you gotta give them a sep, a special number of hours too. It's not like you just, two hours this weekend, uh, three hours, that, no, it's a, it's a set amount so that at least we, we get what we need to have done. So, no, I understand. I, I see a lot of people that volunteer and like Mary's saying, then all of the other things come up. Then if you're a volunteer, okay, that's, that's secondary on your list.
So if that position is added, that's not gonna eliminate the overtime? Because if it's a Monday through Friday?
Correct, they'll still have overtime. Um, but again, you'll have, um, uh, right now, we have a certain level of burnout that occurs with our own staff. Um, because, you know, it's hard to plan when you, every other weekend, you're in. Um, this would give a little bit more respite there. And they wouldn't be stretched as thin when we're responding to storm response, when we're responding to, um, you know, just, uh, winter conditions or, um, uh, just the ongoing maintenance. They'll be able to tackle it in a more timely manner because there'll be three as opposed to just two.
Another thing to keep in mind is not all the events that happen in town are sponsored like through the town, but they are always at the events to make sure everything's cleaned up, to help, like KBA, when the KBA does like the, um, the second Saturdays, the guys are always there, they're helping vendors, they're helping move stuff, they're helping. So I mean, they, they do a hell of a job, I'm just gonna say it. And I think for, for the morale, I mean, look how beautiful Owen Bell is and look at all the work Bruno and his crew does in this. And it, and it's year-round. And every time I come down to the town hall or just driving through, you see those guys. They're- And it, and it's year-round, and every time I come down to the town hall, or just driving through, you see those guys. They're always out working. So, I think, you know, this position will help them. And like you said, if they're on every other weekend, I even realized they were seven days a week, all the time. That's a lot, and you don't want them to burn out, 'cause we have an excellent crew, so. Just my opinion.
Any further discussion? So, the item up right now would be a cut of forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And that would be cutting the increase from a part-time to a full-time position, um, for Parks and Rec. So, at this point, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of-
Did we have a, a second poll?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. All those in favor of this, of making this additional cut, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion fails. I believe that was five-four.
Oh, you were no? Oh, I didn't see that, sorry.
No, I voted. I voted yes to the cut. So, it was, yeah, five, that's where I came up with the five-four.
So, I wanna go back to KB Ambulance and the, make a further cut than the five thousand. I don't think they were transparent. And did you get anything back about their today, act, their actual today expenditures, Mary, that I had asked for?
I did not receive. I'm sorry. I did not receive any additional information.
How much of an additional cut would you be looking to make?
Um, fifteen thousand additional.
Fifteen thousand additional for a total of twenty thousand dollar cut?
They were asking for sixty. I think their, all of their numbers were inflated, electricity a thousand.
They're asking for sixty increase, but two-ten total, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, two-ten minus twenty.
One ninety.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Whitehead. Um, I will, and this motion is to cut an additional, fifteen thousand for a total of twenty thousand off of the request from KB Ambulance, and that would be line number five-zero-two-seven-five. Um, I will open up for discussion.
When they came in the first time, I did ask them for a detailed budget of their, their operating costs. So, we can, we could decide, you know, what kinda subsidy they need, because again, we have to, the taxpayers, it's all taxpayer money. We have to decide where that money is potentially gonna be going to, and they did not do that. They came in with a five-minute budget. And it, to me, it was incomplete.
I agree, and it-
What was the, uh, what was the internet cost? Five hundred a month, yeah.
And I will go back to when, when KB Ambulance came before the council for a letter of support for them do- doing the transport. There was a lot of requests for more detailed numbers, and unfortunately, we didn't get the detailed numbers we were asking for at that time either. Any further discussion?
My opinion just was that, um, they were vastly underpaid. But on the flip side, uh, with the history that you're saying about transparency of numbers, uh, I think that's extremely important. It, I think that you, you do have to make a case with numbers of, of what you're asking for. Um, so, um, just an opinion.
Thank you. And, and my thought, too, especially now that they're doing the transports, because in a sense, that's a for-profit part of their business when they're a nonprofit. So, it, to see a separation of, and that's one thing we had asked for, was we wanna see a separation of what you're getting for the transport side as opposed to the services that are provided to Killenly. And, and I do understand that they did cov- they noted that they did cover, there was a hundred and thirty-three, um, calls that they went on with their transport ambulance, um, due to the fact that now they have an additional ambulance in town. So, I mean, it's, that's a benefit to Killenly, but at the same time, it, it would be great to actually see everything. And, and that's why I am definitely in favor of asking every, all, all the entities that are coming forward for the human services subsidies next year, where when they submit the application, we wanna see their budgets. We wanna see how, we don't wanna just say, oh, well, this is how much more we want, this is what we do. We wanna see the numbers to back up their statements.
Kinda to your point, if we give them the money, how do you know it's going to the people, the workers? Without that information, knowing what their, what their salaries are, which is, which should be public information, being a nonprofit. If we give them, if we give X amount of dollars, how much is enough for one? And is that getting trickled down to, in their budget, to the, to the people that really deserve it?
And I definitely do agree that our EMS staff is severely underpaid. But I agree with everything you said, Mr. Whitehead. We don't know where that money, once we give them the money, they can move it around.
Right, I agree. If they were transparent, I would have no issue. But they're not.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, we did ask again if they can separate, you know, this is a revenue stream, this is not, and, and they, they, like, they should have two sets of books. And we should not be paying for their startup, and this was my biggest concern last year. And with that all being said, they do have, they have done a lot of work. They're not fully transparent, it's not gonna, it's like NDDH. They're on track, but it's gonna take a while. So, from where they were four or five years ago, to where they are, they're making progress. And, and my fear is, we're punishing the workers that do an excellent job, and we already know they're underpaid. So, do we have an opportunity to go back to KB before we vote on this, to change the number? And say, hey, we need more information before we finalize what we're giving you? Do we have that option?
We would have to, we would, basically what we could do would be go over all the other cuts we're looking at, and then not make a decision tonight. Um, basically, we would have to table the motion for-
So, realistically, the information that you guys are asking for, I don't know that KBA, KB Ambulance can supply that in a few hours. 'Cause you have to make a decision on the amounts that you're sending to annual town meeting this week. That's required by charter.
By charter, yeah.
So, you have to make your decision on what numbers you're sending to, sending to, um, the annual town meeting, you know, really essentially by the end of this week. Um, I don't think that their financial data is in the format that you're asking them to provide it in, and it's gonna take them some additional work in order to, to produce that information. I just, I, I haven't asked, I haven't asked them that, but I'm just saying, I, I think that's likely the problem.
See, that's concerning. Like, they have started a startup, kept revenue-based division. But they're, they come to the towns because they're a nonprofit. So, if they can't separate those numbers, that's a big problem.
Well, I think that they're working on, I just don't, I don't, you know, I don't wanna say-
Right.
That realistically, they can hand you that data tomorrow. And I don't know that that's, I just don't know that they can do it. You can absolutely, you would essentially adjourn today without setting any numbers, you would, um, and then reconvene tomorrow, and I can update you on what they, what they provide. I don't even, you know, like, you're assuming that Steve is available to spend all day doing this. Right? And that he's not gonna be out on the rig on calls. You know what I mean? I mean, him and all the administration go out on calls. I don't know what their capability is, not saying that they don't necessarily, but I don't know it's a push of the button to pull that data out, and there wouldn't be some dissection that has to happen of that in order to put it in a format that everybody can, you know, really, um, get their arms wrapped around. I just don't know that it's a push of the button, that's all. And I think that there's an, if there's an assumption that they can just push a button, I don't even know that they're all in tomorrow. You know what I mean?
So, I wouldn't wanna hold up the process for twenty thousand dollars, but I would expect by next year's budget that they have a lot more transparency going on.
And I can provide that feedback to them for that, but, you know, I just wanna be cognizant of, you know, that.
Ms. Barclay.
So, I have to agree with Andy that it was a five-minute budget. What I asked for was the non-salaries, and that wasn't brought back. I think everything in that, though, all those line items were, were padded heavily.
Um, I think they're, they're all fair points. Uh, the, the second thing that, that got me maybe from a more personal standpoint is that i- if, if you, they can show that these workers are here, and they're from our town, and they're staying in this job, and getting this level of pay for the betterment of our people, uh, it, we may be able to definitely agree that their accounting, I, uh, as I will say, it's not their strong point. Uh, they're obviously suffering there. But deep down, I, I think all the people that are there are there for a hundred percent the right reason, so I think this makes it su- super tough.
We've, we've asked for this information months ago.
I, I understand.
So, the click of the button doesn't matter to me, we've asked for it.
No, I, it's, it's valid. I, I, I think they care more about saving people's lives than, than, than a balance sheet. And I, I think that's gotten in their way, but I, I have to commend them for it at the same time, even though I agree with you that it, they should've given you the number. Uh, I'm just weighing the human element more than the, the number, that's all.
Ms. Whitehead.
To kinda go along with Tony's weighing the human number, what happens when you dial nine-one-one and they're not there? I work at Pierce. Mort Lake is two doors down from Pierce, and sometimes I wait twenty minutes for them to send me an ambulance. I can't imagine having to be in Killenly, in South Killenly or East Killenly, waiting for an ambulance from Putnam or Mort Lake or, or Musup to show up, and you're in the middle of a cardiac distress, or a respiratory, or, or a diabetic emergency. So, I mean, I have spent a lot of ti- I spent a lot of time with Randy Daggett. The way he, the way that, the, the, the field ran when he was running it is not the way it's run now, and they're making that transition. The state sets their rates. They can only charge what the state lets them charge for, for an ambulance transport. Um, and then they have to wait and take whatever Medicare or Medicaid gives them for that, that low-ball number. I, you know, I'm not sure what they do for pad, how they pad their numbers. I know they're considered a business. I know business charges are definitely higher than, um, our own personal services. I don't know why, but, 'cause it runs on the same wires, but, um, man, I'm pretty sure they do have an outside bookkeeping company, and their board of directors has been, um, reviewing everything and trying to get everything up to speed. And I, I agree with Patty, you know, they are making progress. They made a lot of progress in the last year. Um, it's been a tough ball trying to, Ra- Randy Daggett left some really big shoes to fill, and, um, it's, it's still a really, it's still a sore spot for them. I know it is. They, they've lost a lot of people in the last couple of years, so. But I just, as a nurse, and as somebody that dials nine-one-one, I like to know that I have, in five minutes, I might have somebody here, rather than waiting thirty minutes.
But I think we can't take, I think we can't take that, if they're, if we don't give them this money, we can't take that they're not gonna be here and, and provide that service. I'm just asking for responsibility, and we've asked for that many, many times.
If there's nobody to get on the, if there's nobody to get on that ambulance, you will not get an ambulance.
At some point in time, you have to make the responsible decision to make people accountable for their, what they're doing. They can't just keep doing that. Their big undertaking was, was Day Kimball. That's their big undertaking.
That's, that's not, they, they know as well as, is-
Absolutely. It's, it's their big undertaking is, is Day Kimball.
No, Day Kimball, Day Kimball's the, Day Kimball is the bane of their existence.
All we're asking is that they wouldn't have went into it if it was a bane of their existence. That's not-
It, it was an option to explore, but now, as Mary's related, they're, Day, Day Kimball's diverting. They, and Bacchus and Plainfield divers all the time. Um, so, a thirty-minute round trip turns into a two-hour trip.
But if you're running a business, you should be responsible, and they're not.
They're still trying to hire, too. They're short-staffed by twelve people. So, if they can't increase their salaries, they're gonna stay short-staffed, 'cause there's so many other places to go.
I have no problem giving them a hundred thousand dollars, but if it, if we don't know where that money goes to, what's the, that's, that's like giving them a blank check. That's responsible. We have to be responsible where the money goes.
So, I just wanted to talk about money a little bit. Uh, so, last year, the ask was one fifty. Last year?
Yes.
Oh, it was. And so, we, no, the give was, the give was one fifty, correct. And they were fifty in the red. And they rolled that into this year, and so, the ask is the same. Uh, so, it is a forty thousand dollar increase over what we gave last year, we cut twenty, right? So, it'd be one ninety? Yeah, so, it's, it's still a forty thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, I'm looking at it in budget right now. Um, it's line item five-zero-two-seven-five, and you are correct. The twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, approved amount was a hundred and fifty thousand. Yes, we did. We gave them forty thousand. A year before, it was a hundred and ten thousand. So, just historically, um, nineteen, nineteen-twenty, it was twenty thousand. Twenty-twenty-one was sixty-nine thousand. Twenty-one, twenty-two was sixty-nine thousand. Twenty-two, twenty-three was a hundred and ten. Twenty-three, twenty-four was a hundred and fifty. Um, and then now, we're, they're looking for two-ten.
And I will say, so part of that, in the increase that you're seeing, is they, at, in the earlier years, they were on the town's workers' comp insurance.
Yes.
And they tran- and we transitioned them off of our insurance, and they had to get their own insurance. And part of one of those initial larger increases was because of them having to get their own independent workers' comp insurance. So, the town's subsidy to them was actually higher, 'cause they didn't pay us for the workers' comp insurance. So, if you combine those, there, there was a, another implicit rate subsidy by that workers' comp insurance. So, you know, you can't necessarily just go, well, we were only subsidizing this in those earlier years, because they were on our workers' comp policies.
Um, and that transition, I believe, was between the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, to the twenty-twenty-twenty-one year.
Correct.
Which, that was when it went from twenty thousand to sixty-nine thousand. But if you look at it, there's only a forty-nine thousand dollar increase, whereas right now, they're looking for sixty thousand. And it isn't like they-
Forty percent higher inflation rate across the board in this country right now.
Forty? I thought it was like eight.
In the past forty years-
Oh, thank you, thank you, Patty.
Everything's more expensive.
Oh, you're my, you're my, oh, sorry.
And I think emergency services should take priority, as far as we shouldn't be, I, just my opinion. 'Cause I, I went after them last year, too, and I've seen the changes, and how much harder they're working to be. And Doug Hall, he knows he's not, you can see, he came from what, Lifelike? And you can see, he has a background. He's doing a good job breaking things down. He's able to look. Um, I sat in a meeting with him at NICOG when they first introduced him, and he's getting a handle on this, but it's not gonna happen overnight. So, I'd rather not cut emergency services. If we have to make cuts elsewhere, you know, we make cuts elsewhere. So, I was looking at the bills, at their bills, the non-salaried monies are, were not, those, those numbers were not given. I asked for a year-to-date, and he did not give them. All of those numbers are way, how, whose cable bill is five hundred a month?
I also wanna say that it's not a cut. Technically, it's a, it's a, still a forty thousand dollar increase.
And, and I agree with Ms. Barclay. I mean, the, the five thousand dollars a year for a cable bill, if you consider the fact of any cable usage that's there-
if you consider the fact of any cable usage that's there, isn't just for Killingly. It's also for the tri-town ambulance. It's also for the transport. So at that point, are they really spending fifteen thousand dollars a year? On cable? So I mean, it's.
That may be their internet, not just cable. I mean, that's probably a package of cable and internet. Just, just for clarification, I don't want people to think that it's only probably what they're paying for cable TV. But there's likely that's their internet drop service. It's probably a package that's incorporated in that.
And then telephone's an additional five thousand. So I mean, you're looking at.
Well, they're in nine, they take nine-one-one calls. They're, they're high volume. Their internet's not going to be the cost of ours.
They also have that computer screen up there that tells where, who's on calls, where calls are. That, that's probably, that's constantly on, so I don't know if that's different service to.
Does anyone have stomach to split? Anybody feeling that?
One of the things I looked at, when I was looking at their request is the, and I was looking at it this past week, is the ambulance replacement cost at seventy-eight thousand dollars. I mean, if you're replacing the ambulances every four years, I could understand putting that much away for ambulance replacement. I know they do have multiple ambulances that serve Killingly. However, that's only part of their fleet. It's not their entire fleet. So my concern would be that how much of that is, are they trying to catch up from previous years? Because I know only recently they've started the C N R to replace the ambulances, but I mean, having a full budget to see how much is actually going towards Killingly out of their full budget would definitely help with the deliberation process on it. And maybe at that point, if we saw the full numbers, we would be unanimous in favor of the entire ask. Or if we saw the full numbers, then maybe we'd be unanimous in cutting it twenty thousand. It's just difficult when you don't have all the facts in front of you.
Just with regards to their C N R, so that, their ambulances are running, I think he said somewhere around two and change for an ambulance, right? They're running them for eight years. That's what their estimated useful life is of them. So by taking that seventy-eight thousand and just dividing it by three ambulances, which is what Killingly has, is three ambulances, over eight years, you're not even meeting the minimum amount for a vehicle replacement. So they do have some catch-up because that hadn't been previously budgeted for. But, you know, they're clearly, that seventy-eight thousand dollars is not their entire fleet of vehicles. Just on a useful life.
Wouldn't they be including the other towns?
No, because they're only.
It's just our town.
That's only, that's only ours.
Seventy-eight thousand is just our town.
Correct, correct. But I'm saying what they've, what they've incorporated in the budget ask for Killingly appears appropriate to be only the ambulances they have in Killingly. They, they're not including the ambulances of their other services. So they probably have C N R built into those budgets. But what they have built into the budget ask for Killingly is, in my estimation, what would be an appropriate C N R request for the ambulances that they have using in the Killingly in this service provider, not all of their other components.
There again, if they had all the numbers, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
So I'd just like to say too, they're also, whatever we vote on now becomes before the voters. So there's still a chance if, if people are very unhappy with where this lands, that we could go to the five. I mean, go to the twenty or more. So I don't know. I kind of swayed by the arguments honestly about needing it.
Any other option too would be if they get us the numbers by the end of this week, we have time before the annual town meeting to where from the floor it could get adjusted as well.
So you would want to do it from the floor as the council or you would?
Council's the one that needs to send the budget to the annual town meeting as approved by the council.
Yes.
Right. It becomes your budget at that point in time. And you would be advocating for your budget.
But we would be, we would go forward with the cut and then that cut could be reversed at the town, at the town meeting.
Yes, because if more information is brought to the council between now and then, it, if there's, if there's enough support for this cut, we could pull the cut back if we're given more information and more transparent information that shows exactly.
So what specifically are you asking for? So that way, because I don't know that they were clear that you were expecting to have, you know, new information before tonight's meeting. So what specifically do you want to receive by the end of this week so that way they can be responsive?
I would.
Their year-to-date non-salaried expenses. So I'm assuming that all of the expenses that they gave were because, were being built.
For, in totality, for all of their lines of service or just for the Killingly portion?
I would say both, so that way we can see what the difference is between how it's getting split up as far as is Killingly covering more than, more than our fair share. I mean, if the numbers show that, that back up their request, then I would be, if the cut does go forward, I would be completely in favor of pulling that cut back if the numbers support it.
Hundred percent. You have to do your due diligence.
Because the mortgage was like, how, how old is that building? There was a huge, what was the mortgage they were?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-one seventy, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
They've done renovations on that building.
Get their generator too.
How long ago was that?
I don't remember how long ago. It's, I would say ten, twelve years maybe, I guess.
I'm guessing that mortgage should have been paid off in ten, twelve years.
No, they would take it out for probably twenty to thirty years.
But we're hypothetical questions when the answer's, and I asked them specifically last time they were here to provide us with more information, detailed information about what they're doing. I specifically asked that.
And Patty, didn't you want to see revenue or you don't care until next year?
They're not going to be able to get it in a week and I'm not going to hold up the budget for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, no, I'm just asking.
With an emergency service. No, I'm not.
Yep. So can I ask a procedural question? So you're talking about table and it, what about the five thousand for the fuel? Does that stay?
Well, the twenty thousand would include, it would be fifteen thousand addition, as, as I stated, it would be fifteen thousand additional. Yes.
You have the motions on the floor, so that has to be voted on.
Yeah, the motion on the floor is for an additional fifteen thousand over the five that was discussed earlier.
Okay, with no waiting for answers. Oh, no, because you're saying we can get, do that later from the floor. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Any further discussion? So the motion is to cut an additional fifteen thousand separate from the five thousand from the fuel line, from line item. Five zero two seven five.
Can I put a request, Mr. Chair, that we have a roll call vote?
Sure. All right. So we will have a roll call vote.
No.
Mr. Grandowski.
No.
Mr. Kertula.
No.
Mr. Barclay.
Yes.
Ms. Wakefield.
No.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. George.
No.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Ms. Murphy.
Ms. Barclay.
No.
Six, no, two, yes. Three, yes. Yes.
Motion fails. Mr. Grandowski.
What about our course for early voting? How is that, are we absorbing a lot of that? Are we getting funding? I mean, we had a little bit, what, four days and now going forward, probably, probably have another primary and the full election. How is?
The legislation is still indicating that they're going to be subsidizing the towns by ten thousand dollars. Our early voting process that we did this time didn't absorb ten thousand dollars worth of cost. They're still getting those final numbers to us because payroll will be getting ready to process for next week, which is when that early voting, those numbers come in to the payroll process. But I'm not expecting it to exceed that grant level amount, so we would be looking at similar levels for subsequent years. So we do have ten thousand dollars additional proposed in this budget as an increase to poll workers. And we're also assuming that the, we're going to still get some subsidy from the state. So it'll be likely a shared cost.
So I'm very uncomfortable, of course, I can't find the page now, very uncomfortable with the increase in staff or, I shouldn't even say that, a ten percent increase in every section of the recreation and administration budget when all of these really, really important other things are getting cut. I feel like everyone should tighten their belt. So I was going to recommend or make a motion for a five thousand dollar cut from seasonal staff line. But since we have people who are, do not put into, do not accept the fifteen hundred dollars stipend on the board and we could go into executive session or pass papers, like it's not about people's personal business, I would make a recommendation, a motion that we either cut five thousand dollars or we see how much of that we make up in people's salaries and we offset it. And that will lower that mill rate.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm clarifying and understanding. So you want to know whether or not there's going to be enough of a reduction in the town council stipends amount to then offset the increase. I will say the increases that are here, the additional, they're, so in the seasonal staff, as I indicated, there was, there's minimum wage impact that is occurring there. And then the addition above that is being offset by directly revenue associated to those programs. So there is that.
But I see ten percent increase, twelve percent increase, ten percent total increase. So I just, I don't feel right about not making a cut when, when all of these other people situations are tightening their belts. So I'd like to suggest either five thousand dollars in the staff or even just an offset. If we have three thousand dollars, we offset it. If we have forty-five hundred dollars, we offset it. And somehow getting to that number, you know, we don't have to make it public who does what. We could pass papers, you know, or take executive session for a minute.
So that's on an executive session item, so you would have to find another way of doing that. But I just want to be cognizant and I just want to be, make sure that I'm articulating this correctly, correctly or thoroughly at least. With the seasonal staff, there, part, a good portion of that increase is directly related to revenue. So if you cut that program out of that, you're also cutting the equivalent amount of revenue. So there's no reduction to the mill rate because you're also cutting revenue at the same time. Because there's programs tied to that that generate revenue.
The cut would then be, you would still have your program because the cut's actually coming from the town council.
I understand what you're saying. I just.
It would be offset. So there would be a cut in the budget.
Yep. So you're proposing a cut to the town council stipend line? They would be cutting the town council stipend line.
Right, those are who are volunteering to.
Whoever, whatever that cut proposal is, you guys would make a motion to cut the town council stipend line by whatever amount. And that's what the reduction would be.
I was thinking more of a transfer from there to the cut in staff over here.
It will be done by a cut in the town council stipend line is the only way you could do that. You couldn't do a transfer. And then my other question would be, if we do a cut and let's say we cut five, let's say five nines of that out, how would we then go, that, my question would be at that point procedurally, would we then have to cut each individual stipend? Or? Well, no, that's, I'm just wondering legally, procedurally, if we cut that much out of the town council stipend line.
No, I think Michelle's just asking about who would give up their stipend and then cut that from the budget.
Yes, but if we were to cut that from the budget, would we procedurally have to cut it evenly across the board or could we?
As long as we were to get, as long as we were to get an indication or something documented from the councils that, the council members that wish to forego their stipend, documented that would equate to that cut, then we would be able to administer it that way as opposed to dividing it equally among.
Okay. But considering this is a special meeting, we can't add items to the agenda, so.
But you're just making a cut to the town council. You're just cutting the budget line item. The individuals wouldn't have to do, they don't have to do it formally here in the town council. They would come to finance and produce a document that says, I wish to forego my stipend. As long as we have enough that equates that, then we would do that. Otherwise, you would end up overspending your stipend line in the fiscal year. If we didn't have enough that met that.
So we did away with one of the, the part-time help, the seasonal help. And we added the full-time. So that's not enough of a difference in change in labor? Why is there, why is there a ten percent increase rate? Because you said seasonal help, one half.
No, this is, this is recreation programs. So this is, the recreation programs, not parks. Yep, not, not the same as parks.
Mr. Chair, but to do that, you would have to have everybody agree to cut the amount first. You can't just make the cut. And should you have something, there's not enough time to do something like that. That would create a nightmare. You know, if we had a week, you could have another meeting. But this has to be, this has to be.
It's just a piece of paper.
No, you can't, you can't, that's a different, it's a whole different subject.
Public meeting, we can't, and we can't go on executive session because you can't add an, add an item to executive session.
And that's not an executive session item.
Exactly.
So you guys either have the discussion in open public or you don't?
And I.
So we can just say if we don't want to take our stipend and just hand in a letter?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I will say this, we did back during, when COVID happened, I had a discussion with all the council members unanimously across the council. And I expressed this to everyone that I brought this up with, is unless I have unanimous support from each person, and I did it individually because I didn't want everybody to be, because, because there could be situations where someone is really depending on that stipend for something. They, all right, I'm going to use my stipend to cover my cable bill. Or I'm going to use my stipend to cover my cellphone. Or a computer program that they use tied to their service on account, on the town council. So I didn't want them to feel the pressure of being on the camera if they needed that money for a certain thing. That's why I went to everyone individually. And when I talked to each person individually and every single one of them was in agreement to forego their stipend, that's when I brought that up during budget deliberations that unanimously, we all agree upon this. So at that point, I put it on a table to remove, completely remove that item, and we did that year. I just feel bad being on a camera, putting everybody on the spot because everybody's in different financial positions. So, and I would, I just feel bad putting everyone's situation on camera for something like that in front of the general public.
I, I agree with that. I wouldn't want that to be public. That's not what this was about. It was a way to make that ten percent go down so that they're tightening their belt too and maybe we could take it somewhere else. and maybe we could take it somewhere else. That's all, but it doesn't seem possible, so, you know, to transfer it over there.
Mary.
And I will say, just overall, in looking at parks and recreation, while yes, some of the expenditure line items are increased, if you look at the offsetting revenue, that budget actually has a decrease to the mill rate. There actually, there's actually a budgetary savings to that overall of 7.7% when you account for the revenue that that generates.
So is that like actually then like a 3%? Is that what you're telling me, a 3% increase?
No, they actually have a decrease of 7% overall when you account for the revenue. So if you look at the top of that page.
Over the 10%, no, I see the 7.7, so you get a 10% increase, you get a 7% decrease. I'm saying is that 3 something?
So your revenue, your revenue is offsetting that 10% plus an additional 7%. Because it's reducing the overall expenditure burden to the mill rate. It's reducing it by 7% from the current year as opposed to a 10% increase. So it's actually a 17% change.
Okay, I would take my motion off the table.
That, that's all I was going to point out. And the seasonal help for rec is like Camp Wallaby and the summer programs. And so, right, a lot of it?
It's a lot of the summer programs, but it's also, there's a bunch of athletic camp programs that are done, theater programs, theater camp programs. And then like youth hoop. It's done in the, is all in the seasonal category. And some of our fitness programs are in there. So there's a lot of our direct programming is seasonal positions.
In the light of looking for additional places to take cuts, one thing I would like to throw out there for consideration is looking at, considering where our winter maintenance reserve is at, we're at $332,000. And Ms. Gloria, how much did we add to the winter maintenance reserve back in October of last year that was left over from the previous year's surplus? Was it 40-something thousand?
I think it was close to that, but I don't have the number directly off the top of my head. But it was pretty close.
So considering we've got 332,000 in there. Now, in the current budget, well, I see that there's estimated expenditures of $3,000 during the current fiscal year. So we're looking at a timeframe of, we're nine months into the fiscal year and we've expended $3,000 out of that. I would entertain, if you, if we want to do a further cut, do a cut from the salt and calcium. And if we do have a heavy winter, we've got $332,000 reserve we can go into to cover, to buy the salt and calcium if we need it. And we could even, let's say we did a cut equal to the transition from the part-time to full-time, the $41,000, $43,127. Because I know there was, there was interest in cutting that amount. And considering we have, we have a very healthy, in my opinion, it's a healthy reserve for winter maintenance, that would be available if we cut the $157,000 on line 50435. Cut it, we'll call it 43,000 just for simplification. That would bring it down to?
114.
Oh, yep, 114,000.
So you're talking about cutting to the temporary position and then offsetting with this money?
No, no.
Or no, making the full and loss.
So my understanding is you're looking at the cut would be to reduce salt by $43,000. And that would help offset the overall increase that's going to the budget for the 43,000. This would be a cut to the salt budget of 43,000.
And I am aware that by adding, by changing the position from part-time to full-time, once you do that, it would always be difficult to go back. I am definitely aware of that. But also considering.
Well, it sounds like we're going to have River Road or.
River, the River Trail.
The River Trail, totally.
We have some river walking.
Something.
Yeah, and so that, by that time, I'll make that motion.
So a motion made by Ms. Murphy, seconded by Ms. Barclay, and that was to cut line 50435, salt and calcium of the highway storm maintenance to $114,000.
So that's a reduction of $43,000.
Yes. Further discussion?
So with the salt shed being full and that we should be, and plus the balance.
Yeah, I mean, I think reasonably.
Barring a hundred years, no storm year.
We'll get Kevin Laman to it, so make sure it's not going to happen.
We'll burn it through. I will say that, you know, going forward, we'll have to be very mindful of watching what is utilized out of the storm maintenance because you wouldn't want to wait until you're literally falling off a cliff and need to all of a sudden significantly increase. So we're going to be very mindful of watching what that reserve balance is and what the annual usage is to determine whether or not we need to start slowly incrementally bringing that salt capability back up to what we are actually utilizing on an annual basis for salt. Or if salt prices substantially increase, that's another, you know, could be another hit. We may not be going through as much product, but if salt increases in price, that would be something mindful of, but clearly you have a healthy reserve. We can walk through that.
And just one thing I look at, like trying to find places where we could trim whatever we can. The one thing I really think about is, especially this year with, with being a reval year and that there is some shift from the commercial side to the residential side. Percentage of the general fund, or excuse me, the grand list. Taking that in consideration and the other piece I really have been looking, thinking about and looking at is with the amount of money we have to set aside because of Lake Road generating being in tax appeal. And we can't touch that because we could have to pay it all back. Once, and I'm really hoping before we come to budget season next year, that there's some kind of settlement on that. I mean, granted, nothing's a guarantee, but whatever number comes out of there, we'll have a better idea of what we have, if any additional, based off of where that, that number comes from. Whether we can come to some agreement with Lake Road or what, what comes out of the tax appeal process itself. And that would definitely go a long way with things like this, like really trying to minimize the, the impact on a huge, in my opinion, it's a huge shift on the, the grand list as far as how much of the grand list is been shifted to residential percentage-wise. I know I can ramble on and I apologize for that. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Mr. Grandelsky.
We're recalculating. And we're still waiting for the United Services, their information too. That could be a cut from the floor.
Then, yeah, and there can be any cuts made from the floor.
We're still going to get that information as well as KV ambulance's information.
I will make the request. I make a motion that we cut United Services by half.
That is, that's the one question we don't know. We don't know if that's mandated, if the $12,000 covers any mandated state mandates. I would just hate to have to cut that and have to get the money back from somewhere else. So, but as it was mentioned, that can definitely be made from the floor. So based off of the.
Are you ready for final totals?
What was the total that we're taking away from the town side?
That's, we're, we're ready to give you those if you've.
Okay. Do you have a total number for that? So on this 172 on the second sheet you gave us, we're adding an extra 43?
Yes.
Taking off, okay.
I've got a question, Jason.
Yes.
Can I, is it time? Couldn't we do the same if we cut half? Couldn't we add it from the floor if we weren't able to do it?
Yeah, that could happen as well. So if you have the numbers.
I got one more question. So for the pavement management, we talked about 1.25 as a reduction?
That was one, one thing, so in our.
1 million was reduction.
In our plan that the town council agreed upon last year, what was the yearly expenditures year by year?
So I don't have that paper right in front of me, but I believe it was we were looking at expending 10 million over the next five years. And so we were coming down, we started at 2.5 and we're coming down to 2,100, uh, 2,250,000 for this current year and then dropping 250,000 annually. And we overall spend the 10 million. So what's reflected in the cuts that you have before you brings that pavement management plan expense down to 2,250,000. And it brings the revenue or the fund balance allocation to match that, 2,250,000. So there's no impact to mill rate.
I understand what your question was and that was my one thing. I tried digging through all my paperwork and tried to see if we had anything that was submitted in that, in our packet when that presentation was brought forward.
It was 10 million over five years, right?
Yes, but it wasn't 2 million a year for five years. I knew there was some shift, but I couldn't remember what it was each year. So the, the middle year being 25 to 26 would be 2 million. You started out at 2.5, then go to 2.25, then go to 2. Then it would be 1.75 and a 1.5. So the, going back to the original 2.25, which would have been what we had slated for this year, would be that $1 million less from the general fund into pavement management. Now, Ms. Gloria, I do have one question. Looking at all these numbers, the money that is set aside based off of Lake Road generating appealing their assessment, is any of that money earmarked for capital projects as of right now?
It's been shifted over to capital projects. We did recognize that some of it could be used for capital projects. So that way, when we're going through our court process, we can indicate that the town has some expected utilization of those funds. But overall, once that process completes, the town, it would come back before the town council for final appropriation of those funds to whatever capital projects. Or if you decide to shift it back to general government, that's what would take place. But it was identified as fully reserved. So there's no ability for that to be expended because we've identified it as fully reserved. Our auditors have recognized it as fully reserved and that it's, that it is the disputed amount. So it can't be expended.
And what is that total?
The, the difference between where we valued, where the.
What?
Where the assessment was and what.
In the current year's budget or in next year's budget because it's different?
Yes, it changes because of.
Because of the mill rate calculation.
Yes. And it will drop, and as the mill rate goes down, it would go down further as well.
What was currently? In the current year's budget, we have 3,996,373. And in the proposed budget, right now, based on the current calculation.
It is 2,283,398.
So Tammy, your number for what we're reducing the general government budget is 215,685. And so that would bring your general government appropriations number to 24,535,618. I don't, do you want the Board of Education number based on what is presented to you in that cut? Or I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about that one further, so.
Just those numbers a little slower.
Oh, sorry. It's been a long day. That's, that would be the total general government appropriation in your resolution. The Board of Education budget, based on that scenario, is 47,508,839. And that provides a mill rate calculation of 21.18. 18.
And what was the zero mill increase?
So the, it was 21.2. That's the, that's the equalized mill rate number with just plugging in revaluation. I want to be careful with saying that that is a zero rate increase because that's not the same, that's not a factual statement for everyone.
What is the United Services budget again? Or just tell me, I can look through.
The United Services budget is 12,837.
12,781.44.
Yeah, we just put 12,781, we don't do pennies.
I'm reading off the request.
I did have a question on the Board of Education budget with the proposed cut. I did understand it right, when they gave the presentation that the teacher salaries of a 3.48, $568,000, those are, those are negotiated through, so those are non-negotiable, right?
Those are contractual.
And is the school administration at 12.76, 256,000, is that the same? Do we know if that's the same?
Yeah, that's usually a union contract.
It's a union contract. So I, I look at those two numbers, that's 824,000.
I'm sorry, that's no, that's not. I, the assistant superintendent's in the audience, so I'm looking at him. So what's your question?
I will entertain a motion to suspend rules to allow the assistant superintendent to speak.
A second.
Okay, so who was the first on that one? Okay. Yep. Discussion. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So my, my question was on school administration. It's a, it's an add of 12.76% at 256,454.81. That's different than teacher salaries, is that not contractual? Or is this, is this, is this a raise for school administration?
It, it's not, it's, it's additional positions that have been approved. So that would include the athletic director and the director of mental health as well as raises. So a small amount of it is raises, very small. The, the majority of it is for the new athletic director position that has been. that has been added to the local budget, as well as the director of mental health.
So that's in the budget regardless? It's part of the budget regardless? That's already been voted in. The athletic director is already in, correct?
So, the-
Yes, the board of ed did approve that. Part of those funds, however, even though it looks like a very large increase, some of those funds were moved from another account because we did have some part-time athletic director in other accounts that are now moved into this account. So it's, looks very large.
And in regards to the director of mental health, up until now, that was a fully grant-funded position. The grant that we were using over the past two years expires on September 30th. That's why it has to move into the local budget.
So that's over a third of your decision package at 285,000. So my point on this to the council was, I, I, I don't like having to pay more for, for internet, for car insurance, for health insurance, for taxes. I'm not a fan of any of those. I, I just view education in a town not as a burden on me, but as an investment. It may not be, it may not be popular with everybody, but when I look at cutting it in half, I look at they pre-spent 699,000. We're giving them 703 out of the 1.4. That doesn't even cover the 824, just for the contract, just for the contractual, if, if I'm getting the numbers right. And we, I was in favor of the 1.75 instead of the 2 million for the non-funding, uh, the non-lapsing. But even after that, we're going to be putting money in the general fund somewhere around a million dollars that we're going to be using. We're cutting a million dollars from paving, and I'd like to make a motion to add 297,000 to the 703, to make it a million dollars to meet 66 percent of, of the budget that the board of education is asking for. That's it.
I'll second that motion.
So what was, yeah, what was that exact?
Give me your number.
I put it at 297. Either it's out of, out of fund balance, or the general fund to bring the 70322, 7, 703722, would basically bring it to 1,700, 1,722 dollars.
So you're just looking at increasing their overall expenditure?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Yep, to, which is getting them at, at a little over 60 percent of what the ask was, instead of 50. So it is, I mean, they're asking 1.4.
But you said out of the general fund?
Alright, so I guess the que, I think the question for clarification is, are you looking to utilize fund balance to offset that? Or are you just looking at adding this to the, to just general operating cost? And which would mean it would be included in the mill rate calculation?
I think fund balance.
So you want to activate fund balance for operational expenses?
I think so.
Okay, that's what you're asking.
Because then it doesn't affect the mill rate.
Does that affect our double A credit?
It can, yes, because we would be utilizing it for operational purposes. And so that's their concern, is that, how, you know, how are you going to fund that in the future?
Fair enough.
So.
And again, I totally, I totally respect the spending of the taxpayers' money. I agree with you, Michelle. Oh, 100 percent. And we are paying a lot more for a lot of things than we should. I don't think any of us are happy about that. I, I've looked at this town my whole, I've been here my whole life. We, I think we're lucky enough now that we've had, we've had a lot of our best and brightest leave because job opportunities weren't, weren't here. People couldn't work from home, and we didn't, we didn't keep a lot of these young kids. And I'm, I'm an investor in the young kids, and it, it may, it may be, it may be selfish, but I think keeping them here is just going to help grow the town. I'm seeing more businesses come. I want to, I like to promote entrepreneurial spirit, and I think those businesses add to the grand list. We're bringing more people here, and I'd like to see it, offset it, so we have riches in the future. And I think education just is, it, it wasn't, it was tough for me as a, as an ADA kid, but it's just a, it's just a big, a big, uh, it's a big deal to me for investment. I look at it as an investment that, that I don't mind making, and that's it.
I have a quick question. Mr. Guo, I'm sorry to bother you. Could you tell me how many of, how much of the salaries is still funded by grants, looking at that, or no?
How much of the salaries overall, or how much of the salaries within school administration?
When you look at the 29 million on the, the breakdown page.
If you give me about a minute, I think I can answer that. From, from the budget book, I, I would have to calculate the exact call-
I could say it was like 480 something. Does that sound right? It's on page eight, if you add them up. Unless I'm looking at the wrong thing. It's got a page grants.
So on, so on page eight, that's the actual value of all of the grants that we have coming into the, into the district. So some of that is salary, but not all of it. I have the total number of full-time equivalencies, which is 45.8. So we're going to fund 45.8 positions through, fully through grant funding for next year, which is a decrease of, from 58.8.
How many unfilled positions do you have currently? That are not grant-funded?
So unfunded as in, in this school year, or unfunded going into next year?
How many, how many open positions?
I don't have that figure with me.
But I can get it for you.
Yeah.
Out of the, out of the positions that you've funded through, through grants, that we, the non-recurring grants, what are, what are those positions, or how many of them are mandated by the state?
How much on the town side is unfunded by the state?
Yeah, it was in the presentation last week. Yeah, it was.
There's really not a number that you can associate to mandated. I mean, some would say all positions are mandated, some would say none of them are. It's really-
You deem them necessary?
Absolutely, for the programs.
But it's not state mandated?
Correct.
So just, just in ARP, just in ARP S R alone, we had 987,000 dollars worth of positions that are not funded anymore, as of June 30. So, in, in essence, a million dollars, right off the top.
Now, the new position for director of mental health, would that technically be like a state mandated, because you have to provide?
It's not.
Not yet.
Well, it's not a new position. It's a position we currently have. The, the change that's reflected in the budget is due to the fact that the behavioral health pilot grant that we were given from the state expires on September 30th of 2024. So while I am using grant funding from July 1 through September 30th, both to cover salary and benefits up until the last possible day that I can, effective October 1st, unless there's a change that maybe is going to come down the pike that I don't anticipate, it, that rest of that salary is moving into the local budget for next year.
Is that position filled now, since Kathy Coda left?
Uh, that position is filled, yes. But the person has not taken the position yet because it is an internal candidate that's already working in the district. So we can't take there a school-based administrator, so we can't take them out of the school until we backfill that position. So, given the time in the calendar, while it's very possible, we're going to do interviews in, in two weeks, but it's very possible that we may not have that new person until July 1, because they're probably going to want to finish the year in their current job. Maybe not, but that would be what I would anticipate this late in the calendar year.
Is there a possibility in the future, is that a new position? I know it was a pilot program, but is there potential for grant money offsetting that position in the, going down the road? It's a new position, or no?
There, there's, there's always a possibility. Mental health, as you're all aware,
Right, right.
is definitely probably on the top of the list in terms of education.
Right.
So while it seems as though, at least right now, grant opportunities are few and far between because I think they, everybody is trying to finish up ESAR funding before that, you know, runs out. I am always open and going to investigate any potential opportunities. Anything that would allow for salary would definitely be something that we could consider going forward. So while it could be in the local budget, it's very possible that it could be offset going forward. It's just not something that's an opportunity as we speak right now.
And the athletic trainer, that position, that's a new position?
Athletic trainer or athletic director?
Is it?
Trainer.
The trainer was the position that was in the decision package, right?
It's kind of a new position. There's already funding in the local budget for an hourly position that would be contracted out. We made the decision to try to hire someone that would only work for Killingley because we've had a substantial amount of trouble finding someone for, to fulfill the hourly obligations. So we just felt as though it might be more budget-friendly in the long run to, because we, we have athletic events that are not covered because we just can't find anybody because that person is like a unicorn.
And that's for like, if, if a student is injured or something, right? If an athlete gets hurt, or is that for like-
Yeah, so there are, so there are mandated, there are man, there are mandated times where an athletic trainer needs to be on-site, for example, football games.
Right.
But there is a substantial amount of money in the budget to offset that. So there was 49,000 dollars already budgeted for that hourly position, so it was an, it was an overall increase of 25,000 dollars.
And do you have someone in that position now?
Not as, not as of yet, because we haven't posted it. We haven't posted it yet until this is all.
Thank you.
Of course.
I got a question for Mary, or, or Jason, or Tammy. So if we were to take money from the general fund and add to make the million, that's still going to hit the bottom line of the MBR, is that correct? It might not hit the mill rate, but it'll hit the MBR.
Correct. Yep, it would increase the MBR, yes.
Is there any way to not hit the MBR?
No.
Capital?
No.
No.
Nope, because once it gets allocated for the board of education, for that education expenditure, that is part of that MBR calculation.
We are not able to dictate it and put it into the non-lapsing.
No.
No.
So I have a question. So you pre-bought consumables, I'm assuming, for 699,000? What would be the total that you would have potentially given back to the town for this last, past budget year?
There's no way for me to be able to tell you that.
For this year?
For this, for this current year, you, you're taking 699,000, you're pre-buying, correct?
Correct.
So in, in my opinion, I mean, so really, your budget at 3 percent, you're actually 3.1. Your, your budget should be honestly another 699,000 dollars. So what you're asking for is over and above, right? So you're, it's kind of like a shell game, no? Because you're, you're taking, you're taking money that could go back to the town, right?
Yes.
And you're taking that money and putting that pre-buying, which I understand it, it decreases your budget for next year.
Yes.
But still, this always, it's still an increase, a true increase is, what was the, I can't remember, what was the increase for next year?
So our requested increase is 3.01 percent?
But what was the dollar amount?
It's 1.4 million.
1.4 million.
1.4 million. So it's actually, you know, 2.1, right?
Expenditures would be roughly 2.1 increased if you add what they're pre-buying now into their budget ask of 1.4.
Right.
I'm just going to say this for the public, because Andy and I always have this, this discussion. I like the pre-buying. I like that it doesn't hit the MBR, the, where you're locked in with the Alliance District, so I'll just put that out there.
I, I agree with you there, but you, you really potentially increasing the budget, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the, the following year's budget, but you're still increasing the budget by 700,000 dollars. No matter how you slice it, you're increasing the budget by 700,000 dollars. You're not changing the MBR, but you're changing the budget amount to 700,000 dollars. If you, if you're buying something this year that you're using for next year, you're still going, that would have been money you would have to expend next year.
Right, but you're expending it this year.
I understand, but that, this year would be a surplus.
Within your current budget.
So that would have been a surplus that would have been, went back to the town. Instead, you're taking that surplus, you spend it, which helps our MBR, I understand that, but still, in dollar amounts, you're still increasing the budget by 2.1 million for next year. You can just, I mean, explain to me.
Yeah, no, I would disagree, because you're not increasing next year's budget by the 2.1, you're increasing it by 1.4.
You're, you're increasing, how do you, how do you see that?
Our overall increases, our, our overall requested increase is 1.4 million dollars, which a substantial amount, over 2 percent of the 3 percent increase, is all contractually obligated. When I, I, as the superintendent presented a couple of weeks ago, pre-buying is a strategy. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon how you look at it, the district has pre-bought for the last several years, which is a very difficult cycle to get out of. So one of the decisions that was made within the process in terms of trying to be as fiscally responsible in delivering a budget that everybody could potentially live with, was to use potential surplus savings to pre-buy. Now, with that being said, we are hopeful that while we are operating under a surplus, which is what everyone wants on, on April, whatever today is, April 16th, the intention of the school department is to make sure that we return to the town enough to fully fund the non-lapsing account, which is still what our intention is as I sit here tonight. While I cannot give you an, an absolute, or in terms of a dollar amount, and a guarantee, because things could happen, of, of, of things that we just don't know about, because I wish I could tell you what the future is going to hold, we try to use pre-buy as a way to deliver to you and to the town a most fiscally responsible budget.
I just, as, as the taxpayer's side, I think it would be more transparent to say our increase in the budget is going to be 2.1 million, but we're going to take our surplus from this prior year, and we're going to decrease that down.
But, but if we had returned the surplus, we don't, no longer have control over that money.
But it's a surplus, no matter how you slice it.
But, but we would not have control, so I, so I could hand you, I could hand you a surplus of whatever dollar amount you want and not have any of those, and not have, unless you give me the money back to buy those supplies, we wouldn't have the ability to buy those supplies.
But why would you, if you have a surplus this year, why would you need that, need that money for next year?
Well, first of all, you can't always count on having a surplus. We were, are fortunate at the moment to have a surplus, and one of these years you won't, and you will put yourself in a position that-
But that would be the non-lapsing account would take care of that?
Possibly.
Possibly.
It could.
But our, it should be noted, though, that our surplus is mostly due to vacancies, in terms of salaried staff.
And what is the current projected surplus?
Again, I don't have that number for you.
We're in the process of doing a full calculation.
Don't have an estimate for you either.
Yeah, we, you have our sympathies, because you were just sitting in the thing unprepared. I hate when that happens, and I'm out in the audience, somebody goes, "Come on up."
When I watch the tape back later, I, I hope that, I was not prepared to speak tonight, if that's what you mean. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
It's always terrible. Mary, could you just explain, like, really briefly for the listeners, the MBR thing?
Sure. So the MBR means minimum budget requirement. The state of Connecticut-
The state of Connecticut requires municipalities to fund the boards of education budget by the same amount as a minimum budget from the prior year. So we look at what the budget was last year. As a minimum budget, you're required to fund them at that level for the upcoming budget year. If the, if the town chooses not to fund that and lower it by whatever dollar amount, the town would then lose ECS funding for, $2 for every $1 that we decrease the educational funding below the previous year's budget amount. The town loses $2 of ECS funding for every dollar it reduces. So that's the impact that was, when we keep talking about MBR, that's what it is. The state requires a minimum budget requirement for education, for just the educational budget.
So to Mr. Whitehead's point, if there was no surplus this current year and they weren't pre-buying, then based off the increase of 1.4 million, if they weren't able to pre-buy, then I believe we would be looking at a 2.1 million increase is, I believe the point you were trying to make.
That's wrong, but.
Now, I do have one question. Does anyone know the amount that was used to pre-purchase items the last fiscal year for the? Okay. Because my concern is you're, by continuing to, it is a difficult trend to stop. And if you're increasing the amount you're spending year to year, you're creating a fiscal cliff bigger and bigger. Because if it was 200,000 the first year, 400,000 the next year, 700,000 this year, all of a sudden you hit a year with no surplus, then you would be looking at adding whatever that, let's say there's no surplus on the 23, 24 year. And then the following year, when they come back, then they're going to have to add in, or there's no surplus in the 24, 24 to 25 year, then the following year, the 25, 26, you're going to have to come up with that 700,000 somewhere. So bare minimum, you're looking at a $700,000 increase at that point. So that's my one, one concern I have with continuing to pre-purchase stuff.
So the point well taken. I totally understand that, that point of view. I, I try to look at it from, from all sides. I truly do. I try not to make it personal bias. The surplus though, what does the surplus come from? How do we end up every year with a surplus? Why do we have a surplus for the people?
A lot of different reasons.
I can tell you for this particular fiscal year, it is from utilities, it is from health insurance. And the health insurance is because people have opted not to take the coverage. It is due to a number of vacancies. And again, that impacts your health insurance. If there's nobody in the position, they're not taking health insurance. So those are the substantial area where the surplus is.
So I just try to look at this like, again, like an investment where we're having a lot of turnover. My kids just came out of Killenley High School and people would stay in the district because they liked it. Other districts around us pay more in many positions. We're losing people. The more you lose people, you lose stability. I just think for young people today, when we're talking about mental health, this is where, you know, by the time your kids are 18 years old, you've spent 83% of the time you're going to spend with them for the rest of your lives. This makes me want to bawl my eyes out, but it's true. And from age six to age 18, for those 12 years, they're leaving your house at 7:30 in the morning, they're getting home at 3:30. And if they play sports in junior high and high school, it's a lot, it's a lot longer than that. And to me, the goal should be to fill these positions every year, have teachers that never want to leave, use all the money so we don't have a surplus. And that's, that's my, that's my reasoning for wanting to invest a little more.
Thank you.
I just want to add clear, I just want to add some information. I did have Jen run that through. If it were not utilizing fund balance, because I know there's a concern around that too, the mill rate calculation by adding that $297,000 back into the Board of Education would bring the mill rate to 21.34. So just, I always try and give you guys all that information as you're deliberating.
Thank you. I will say, having listened to and sat in on Board of Ed meetings, I have concerns over specifically the way the handling of, the hiring of attorney was handled. When you've got half the Board of Ed that is asking to see what the cost is going to be, asking to see the, I believe it was called a letter of intent from the attorney prior to voting on hiring the attorney. And then motion comes from the floor to vote before seeing that letter when the attorney already said he would be willing to present the letter. When a Board of Ed goes and expends money in a situation like that, under those circumstances, I, I have concerns with how they're spending money when they're, when they're doing things like that. And then from what I've been told, the cost of the new attorney is $200 an hour over the previous attorney. This whole, the 10-4B complaint, I believe they've expended well over $200,000 on that complaint, which, how much of that is from hiring a new attorney in the middle of a case? And that attorney having to get up to speed rather than letting the attorney that had been handling the case all along up until that point to handle the case going forward? So how much money is wasted there?
I'd have to argue that very little because it's only been 60 days and you're at a quarter of a million dollars because of the exact issue that, you're actually making my point. You, people have spoken in high numbers that they weren't in favor of the way it was handled over the last two or three years. That's what, that's what democracy is. And that, this 254,000, you're only, you're only talking 60 days that we've had this new attorney. That can't even be, not even one tenth of that. I would bet my life that it's not that. Now, do I agree with you of the letter intent? 100%. I think that that's very valid. But the reason we've spent this money is because we couldn't come to, I think, a reasonable agreement when a lot of people were, were asking for it and it's, it's obviously a hot button topic and it's going to move forward now. But I think that that's what, that's, that's why we're here. I, I think, I think hiring a new attorney may have something to do with wanting to close the case out and move forward from it. It's, it seems to me it's a dark cloud. It's been going on for a while and it's unfortunate, but.
And then my question would be, seeing how it's only been 60 days, how much of his time has been billed and how much is included in that 254,000? We may be looking at substantially more if the bills haven't processed yet.
It's very fair. It's, I agree. You have to see the numbers. But 23, 24 is, you know, you're at 100 and, 105, so I agree, I'd like to see that number. But before that, you're still at 118 of, you know, 105,000, of 105,000 would, it would be hard for me to think that starting on January 1st, 2023 to now, our fiscal year, that a majority of that would have already been spent. And how, how well was that money spent if it's taken this long to get it resolved would be my question. It's been a long time and it hasn't been resolved and that's the reason we are where we are.
That has to do with the state being so slow?
Possibly, yeah.
All right, so, no, I was, just for clarification purposes, I know Mr. Gambatista wanted to change the, the line item as far as the Board of Ed increase to $1 million. Was there, so that was a motion. Was there a second to that motion?
Yes, edit second.
So the second was by Mr. Grandowski. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All who's in favor of setting the Board of Education budget at an increase of $1 million, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
There was two for and I believe four against abstentions. So it would be two for and seven against. Do we have any more questions for the Assistant Superintendent?
I just want to say thank you for doing that on the fly.
So are there any other items that want to be adjusted or added at this point?
We don't want to try United Services and then we could always do it back from the floor if we had to.
So your motion would be, you would mentioned cutting their ask in half.
To 12.
Which would be?
Not touching their use.
Yep. The United Services request of, it was $12,781. So your motion would be to cut that in half?
Unless people have a different idea of the number, yeah.
That, that sounds good.
So that was a motion?
So I'm making a motion to cut United Services by half.
So 600, $6,391?
Andy had a question.
But are we, now the question was.
Is there a second on the floor?
I second.
Okay, but are we, if we're mandated for part of this, we cannot go in to doing something that's in violation.
Couldn't we do it on the floor?
So there's.
We've got to send the real, we have to send the budget to the annual town meeting that is in compliance. I, 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 I'm kind of.
The only one we. The only part we know that is mandated is the juvenile services.
The youth services, which is a separate request.
Yeah, I just want to make that point.
I, I'd like to withdraw my motion and reword it. Who's my second? If the second.
Yeah, Andy was your second.
What are you rewording?
I'd like to make a motion that we cut United Services by half unless it is mandated, that we have to pay everything.
You can't do that. You have to, you guys are setting a number.
Never mind. I'm going back to the original motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Sticking with that, okay.
That we cut United Services by half.
We got that. And we have your second. You're good.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Murphy and the second was by Mr. Whitehead to cut the United Services funding down to $6,391. I will open up for discussion. Move the question to a vote. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
No. I can't tell.
We're going to have to do.
This is to move the question.
Oh, to move the question. Okay. All right. There's a motion to move the question. Was there a second to?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move the question. All who's in favor of moving the question?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And I don't believe we need to vote on moving it once there's a first and a second. I'd have to refer back to Robert's rules. So at this point, the motion on table is to cut the United Services to $6,391. All who's, I'm actually going to do a roll call for this one because I got a feeling it's going to be a close one. If we could do that, please.
No.
Mr. Cattula?
No.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Tick Barkley?
Yes.
Ms. Wakefield?
No.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. George?
No.
Mr. Gambatista?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I believe the motion fails five-four.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So we're still at.
We're still at the same, we're still at the same numbers.
Yep, you're still there.
So right now, the numbers were back to, I believe on the town side was?
Our number for, for the town side is 24,535,618. Right? Yeah, 618. The Board of Education budget is 47 million.
500.
508,839 for a total budget of 72 million.
044.
044.
457.
457. I should have let you do it.
All right, before I.
And that would leave our mill rate.
That puts the mill rate at 21.18. So that has a total reduction on the general government side of the 215,685, reduces pavement management by a million dollars, increases fund balance for that capital project by 250,000 to meet the two point, the 2,250,000. And it has a 50% reduction to the Board of Education, so a reduction to the Board of Education of 703,722.
Thank you. Before I move for a vote on this, any further discussion? All right, so. Let me grab my resolution. So the resolution would be be resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Killenley and in accordance with section 1,005 of the Town Charter, the Budget of the Town of Killenley, Connecticut for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025 in the amount of 24,539, 24,535,618 allocated to general government and 47,508,839 allocated to education for a total combined budget of 72,444,57 is approved. So that is the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Grandowski, second by Mr. Cattula. Discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.
So everybody remember, there will be no meeting tomorrow night.